I will call the people to order. We'll call, Danny here, Damon.
Here.
Kimberly here, Diana here, Jeff.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
And I'm also here. Meeting's in progress. All right, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you guys want to say this? Oh, well, something is recorded. Everyone can say it.
Beautiful. We are so fortunate to have you here tonight. Thank you so much for sharing your time and talents with us. It just gives us such a great feeling about knowing what our high school program's going to be like, knowing we have great student leaders like you. So let's give them another round of applause. I'd like to also take a moment and introduce the board to one of our newest professionals in our district. This is Alyssa Fooley. Alyssa might look familiar to you as she's been out and about here doing some great things for our students and just been a wonderful, wonderful addition to our faculty and staff, which we're grateful for.
Very excited to be here.
Thank you. And I know you guys have to scoot because you've got something going on today across the street, right? Thank you to our families for making the time to have your children here in Los to enjoy the spirit of the holiday season. And there are some snacks here. Please help yourself. Probably you didn't want to eat the crackers before you started playing. But crackers and cheese, we're so thankful.
Well, thank you for having us.
Happy holidays, all guys.
All right, so I have a non here condition paper. Two A, approval of the presented revised agenda. Okay, motion by Diana, second by Jeff.
Yeah, here.
All right, any discussion? All right, motion by Diana, second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Leading onto to the approval of December 3rd, 2018 regular executive session minutes. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved, but opposed? All right, motion carries. Leading onto three A, school news.
We're so excited. You see a new name here at the board table. She can't be here this evening. We're so excited to welcome Mackenzie Coulter to our board table as our new student representative. She's going to join us starting January 7th. And we had a great conversation with her on Wednesday morning last week, didn't we?
Yes.
What a firecracker Mackenzie is. And I think you're going to see that firsthand. She is involved in student council, she's involved in volleyball, basketball, youth life, and her church. And tonight, I think she's across the street at the high school. So I think you're going to have a very super representative with Ken. So excited to have her. I also wanted to thank members of our school community for their support. Having had received a very auspicious academic award here just recently. You may have read in the press release in the local paper that our school was one of about 373 schools in the entire North American continent, referring to U.S., Canada, and Mexico, being honored by the College Board for their annual AP District Honor Roll. What is this all about? This means that not only have we seen an increase in the number of students participating in advanced placement courses, but all students from all populations, particularly those students who have traditionally been marginalized students or students who may not have had the opportunity to take pathways to advanced placement classes. Moreover, the students, when they took their tests, they did an exemplary job on those tests. They scored three or higher, which is the benchmark. And so we're so very proud. Of course, our high school could do an amazing job preparing the students for these tests. But you know as well as I do, this is a systemic K-12, pre-K-12 effort. And so we're so thankful for having received that award. We'll set up a couple of other notes I wanted to share some good news with you about. January 7th at 5:00 p.m., initially we had scheduled that for an opportunity in the evening for people to come in and be a part of an update. It's all we're doing with student wellness and health with both our coalition as well as our school board, our school district. We met actually prior to this meeting here this evening at 5:00 o'clock. And we've moved that meeting to February the 19th. Just so that way we can have more time to plan. And at that time, on the 7th instead, we'll continue to have a planning meeting. So I know that we've sent out a press release. I'll update that press release to provide that new date and time. 5:00 p.m. on February the 19th is when we plan on having that update to the community. And then lastly, me being goofy, I decided that wouldn't it be fun to have a time capsule at the new high school?
Yeah.
We should have a time capsule. So encouraging anybody and everybody who has something that's representative of this time period, 2018, 2019, if it's music, if it's a good book you've been reading, some electronic equipment, whatever it is, we'll have a new time capsule that we'll include inside the high school. Get the information to me and then what we'll do is have our student body vote on what should go inside that time capsule. Have a little fun along the way with all the great things that are happening with the construction. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, any other school news? All right, three B, citizens comments. None here. So many citizens. Okay, leading onto four A, recommendations of employment.
And I did pass around a document to support the conversation identified administrators. But this is part of... Inside the chapter.
Yeah. All right, so we have motion by Jeff, we have second. Second by Danny. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Leading onto five, seven Jada. Second, motion by Jeff. Jeff, second by Danny, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, leading onto Jada's test. Six A, information advocacy report.
Our Board of Education developed a number of goals as part of their strategic plan. And we're here tonight to update the board as to how we've been doing on those goals. Congratulations to Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Straka for putting together really another nice report for the board. I'll pop that up here. And I think our first candidate is Mrs. Straka.
Welcome, come down, my hands by me though. Come on. We don't bite their snacks. Hi, everybody. So our main focus in what we do in schools is to make sure that we're aligned. And I can be in many different ways. So I'm going to be focusing on more of that academic piece tonight in my past reports. But then I think we're more concerned about the results. But we've also talked about student apprenticeship and work experience and things like that. But now this is going to be sort of the data piece of what we do in our schools. Looking at proficiency and growth are two areas. Past, I'd say 15 years or so, really looking at proficiency, especially with child behind and some other pieces of federal and state legislation. But now we're really trying to look more at growth as well. So the first piece I wanted to offer was just what does that look like at an individual student level? So here's an example of a student MAP progress report. Where parents, as many of you have by receive over time, receive your child's MAP scores to look at their growth, whether it is on reading or MAP on a particular assessment. So you can see on this report, the student from first grade all the way to sixth grade, not only the students projected growth, but then what the student actually achieved. So that growth piece is there, but we also have that proficiency piece on the far right column, which is that percentile range. So if we lined up 100 students, this particular student in the fall of 2018 would have been that 85th person, what we talk about percentile range in that piece. But then we can also look at student growth projections and actual growth by grade levels. So this is going from an individual view to more of a grade level view. So I put up on this slide, you have three figures in your report. I pulled up just two of them for space on the slide. But just looking at what our teachers and what our administrators can look at by grade level growth. Again, that blue bar represents the actual growth and a yellow diagram shows that projected growth. I also said in the report, just to make note of the vertical axes and the Y axes to look at that range as well. Because it may look like some grade levels from particular year seem far off, but really it may have one or two units of growth the students did not receive. But that's pretty typical for MAP. I didn't put this in my report at that time, I'm just going to verbally share. MAP states that typically only 50% to 60% of students actually make their growth. So when you compare that to what Mahora was doing, we're actually doing pretty well with growth. And that's just how MAP growth projections work. So we shouldn't beat ourselves up if only 50% of our students need growth or even 60% of our students need growth. That's what MAP actually predicts is what should occur. Then within the report, we want to look at that proficiency piece still as well because, you know, growth is half the story and I think proficiency is half the story as well. So within the report itself, I just want to point out that the percentile of achievements is rather high for our students as well within our school district. So we have students that are performing really high. And we still want to keep that growth always in the forefront as well. So it's that whole picture I'm trying to present within the report, that growth and the percentile of achievements that needs considered. The percentile achievement is just a percentage based ranking of the achievement reached for a return we're looking at compared to school level norms that MAP or NWA has projected. So we are doing well. And I think that's not a surprise, but we just want to keep our eye on that, especially as we make perimeter changes to keep moving our kids forward. The next piece then are for our juniors and looking at our average ACT scores. Over a couple of years together, whether it's been a gathering retreat with the board or other times we've come together, shared with you, and I shared with you again in this report, how we're stacking up with our local peers. We have that linked in the report as well to look at how we're performing to our county peers, our major conference peers, and the peers across the state. This is just a snapshot of what our graduating class is doing. So ACT provides graduating class performance and then junior year performance. So I'm providing you that graduate year performance because kids can take ACT as many times as they choose. So their score can improve each time. That's why I'm calling the graduate gathering to you all. Within the report, I think at the yellow line up here, I should have. But within the report, I placed a yellow line between the years of 2015 and 2016 just to point out that actually in 1415, that's when our juniors, all juniors in the state were required as part of the student assessment system to take the ACT. So that's why not only Mahora, but throughout the state, you see a slight decrease in composite and content area scores. So if you were scratching your head, that would be fine. The last piece then, that I want to highlight from the report, looked at that college level readiness coursework piece. So ACT, as I stated in the report, has worked with a wide range of post-secondary institutions to figure out, okay, a student has this ACT score, how are they doing their entry-level college courses? And then that's how they decide what a student has college-level coursework ready. So within Mahora, we are doing well compared to the state of Wisconsin. Obviously, we want to do better and better on this. So I just provided just a snapshot. In future reports, I can provide you guys that longitude, no doubt, over time, how our students are doing, not only compared to the state, but then compared to other cohorts that they move forward in our school district. Again, this is just a snapshot of how our students are performing at their high levels. It's just one part of our strategic plan. Obviously, the wellbeing of students in other areas all coincide with this in the report.
Questions?
If you have any staff here for questions, we can talk about the next one.
So I had a question about growth. Early on in your presentation, you, I think you said that MAP only assumes 50% of...
50 to 60% of students nationwide meet or receive their growth projections. I'll go through the article. I've always had...
Please, I don't understand that.
It's not a very accurate projection, is it?
No, it's not.
It's the way they collect the data. So the NWA gives thousands of kids across the country to test.
Right.
And looks at how many of them grow and how many of them don't. And then pick a number roughly to median. Well, if it's the median, half are going to do better than half of them.
Right.
So they're picking a number so that the growth is met by about 50%. They could pick a higher growth target.
Right.
They could pick a lower one. But it's kind of arbitrarily picked. It's based on the actual scores that thousands of kids have done over the past 100 years.
Well, they mean about four years. So these numbers come from 2015 norm. So it's numbers. Because it could be a little bit targeted, but not...
And just because...
Kids nationally are doing.
Right. And NWA says, well, we set a growth target of four points. And 50% of the people score that. It could be 100% of the people at our district, 12% of the people at another district. I mean, statistically, it's frustrating.
Sure. So this is a terrific report. It's great to have all this information in one place. Thank you. What's our assumption? I mean, if it's MAP's assumption, is our assumption the same as MAP's? I mean, knowing what Damon has just said, is that our assumption as well?
I think so. Over time, when we have set our building goals based on our current, or our previous strategic plan, that we have growth in MAP with reading and MAP. Principals were setting building goals at 60, 65%. And I would say in some cases, that was achievable. So I think we are achieving above that normal 50%. We are in the 60%, low 60%. So I think we are over MAP the same, that 50% is sort of the gold standard, maybe low spot based on the mathematical formulas. But it's one measure.
Do we feel tied to that number, to the MAP number? Or do we feel like, or do we feel like we could set a goal for growth, for student growth, independent of the scenario that Damon has just articulated?
I think that's...
Because even 60% to me doesn't seem like a very aggressive goal. We still have 40%. I mean, it just doesn't seem particularly aggressive to me.
I think we want students to grow. So I think that's our standard.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Now, if they don't, so let's say they have a growth goal of 14 and they get a growth goal of 13, they must hit by one unit. Are we going to beat ourselves up about it on that one day and one task? See, people back to the first slide, please. So within that individual student report, there's a standard error as well.
Right.
So if that particular student sat down on that day, he or she scored a 234, but could have scored a 231, could have scored a 237. So we have that standard error piece that plays a part of it as well.
And by the time you get to like eighth grade, the projected growth is three or four points, which is within the standard error.
And starting in the upper or mid 200s. You know what I mean? So you're at 235 or 250. Right. And it's a couple of points. I got it.
I was waiting, right, with you right for a while. I'm like, well, if they have individual growth targets, which they do. So this certain student scored a 247 in the spring and he or she need her growth target? Yes. And then another student may have a 220 and they have their individual growth target as well. Well, if they're individualized growth targets, then they should achieve them. Because it's not just a standard growth target for everyone. But reading through MAP, talking with Paul a lot about it, understanding the mathematical piece of it. You stayed a pretty, simply a pretty straightforward game of how it works. And that's how it works. So we just have to keep in mind we want all kids to grow. And if they miss their growth target by one or two, that's just one measure. We have other measures, reading fluency, reading scores, all those kinds of things to play a part in. Good question, though.
Thank you.
I have a question about the ACT. I'm just curious because I'm not... Yeah, the very last of our graph. Are those simply college scores from the ACT test? What determines...
50%.
English. But what determines whether a student is ready, determined to be ready for college-level coursework? Is it based just on what they scored on ACT in that subject?
Yep, so it is. So, so we said English. So if they've got 18 or higher on an English test, that's considered ready.
What's the math form? I'm curious.
Um, math is 22. 18, I'm sorry, 18 in English, 22 in math, 22 in reading, 22 in science.
Good idea. That's one snapshot. Now you know in the state of Wisconsin, our students are required to provide us data that indicates the percent of students, actually, check that the number of students who are needing to receive remediation. And that data tells us that our students are performing very well at college.
Compared to other places, yeah. We'll get that, make a report of that in the spring.
That's right.
I have a question about the ACT as well. We didn't include the writing scores on the included English, math, reading, and science composite. Do we not get the writing scores?
Um, we did the writing scores on page 14. I was just looking at it for somebody. Um, but within the longitude, no data piece of the report we received from ACT, it was not there. They just report out on these. I could pull that definitely to share with you if you're interested. Okay. Yeah, let me do that.
It's weird to me that English is lower than all rest. I would, I would, I'm just curious why.
Oh, 18, you're saying?
Yeah. Like it seems, you know, just as important as the rest of them. So why does that make them like...
Looking at the more students who score a B or C in college on entry level and looking at then what their ACT score was, that's how they correlated. So...
Okay.
So that would mean college level entry, entry level college English courses are easier than entry level math courses. Because kids are scoring higher, so they don't need as higher, as high of an ACT.
Yeah.
Is that a math biased way to look at it?
It's always a math biased way to look at it, but... Got a question? So writing, I will give that information. Any else stand back? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir Johnson, keep going.
So I have the area wellness, support systems for students and staff. And then the objective was on evolving demographics within our community as the first indicator. And then the second was anecdotal and empirical data for student services team. And so when we really look at student data, it's really important to know who are in our classrooms, who are we teaching, as we make curricular decisions, and we make teaching decisions, and support staff, and then all of those components are really important to know who's right in front of us. As we talk a lot about assessments being one snapshot in time, our student demographic information is the same, is the same theory to write. It's one date with the third Friday count. And so are our numbers the same for free reduced lunch as they were a month ago? Absolutely not. Are they the same in general? They're not. And so they're constantly moving and changing. Oldestness is another area that's constantly changing and moving targets. And so we'll get into that specifically when we go into each little component. But overall, our district enrollment is 2,517. And that, when you look at per grade, you can see where we're at. 4K is one of the largest 4K classes I think they said we've ever had. And so we seem to be on the trend of going upward. But it has kind of up and flowed throughout the last few years. So it's remained pretty consistent, but a little up and down. Really looking at student demographic information, this again is self-selected. So parents select these categories. You can see where we're at this year and then comparative to years past. So we're really pretty consistent. Our district remains about 91% white students within our district. Looking at students with disabilities, we've got this year and then the five-year average as well. And we remain pretty consistent as well with about 10 to 11% of students in our district being assumed with a disability. That's pretty comparative to the state average as well. The, where you're kind of, where you're starting to really get alarmed is like 14%, but right around 11, 12% is just kind of right on average with every other piece of data. So we're looking pretty good. And, you know, one of the things that I hear over and over again is our open enrolling into the district is being able to provide supports and programming in their institutions with disabilities is one of the top reasons why families come to our district. Looking at ELL status, so English Language Learning. This again has remained pretty consistent. We're about 98 to 99% of students are English as a first language speaking. And then we provide supports for 36 students whose primary language is other than English. And in our district, those are three different languages. So it's primarily Spanish, followed by Albanian and Chinese. So those are our top three languages. There's a couple of other languages, but those are our top three, the students we have. And then in terms of free reduced lunch. So again, it's remained relatively consistent where we're kind of at, which is about, is that about 15%? Students who are free reduced lunch within our district. That again is another thing that really changes after the first part of the year as we identify students and start to learn different situations and strategies to help kind of go through those categories. So on this date... On this date and time, we were about, you know, fourteen, thirteen percent free reduced lunch within our district as a whole. And, and then you know probably all the supports we put in place to help support kids. We have the weekend backpack program, we provide family support. This is one of the true blessings of being part of this community, is the amount of families who are asking to help other families. Really going above and beyond. We've been able to help a lot of families who are homeless, and a lot of families who aren't free reduced lunch, provide support and stability in rarely specific situations, so. And I think the next one is McKinney-Bento, which we specifically named instead of homeless. Is McKinney-Bento, because when you, this is another self-identified category, when you say homeless, mo, majority of people check no. But McKinney-Bento really goes into a bigger, it's a much broader definition of homelessness, which is doubling up. It's not consistent housing, so it could be motel or hotel for a period of time, you're in transition, I'm living with grandma and grandpa for a temporary time, maybe I got, lost my job, and so I'm moving here until I get the new one. There's a lot of different reasons why it is, and it doesn't necessarily mean I'm homeless, living in my car, living on the street, all of those categories. And so this is one at the beginning of the year. A lot of times goes really low, and then ends up accelerating as we learn family situations as the year progresses, so.
So is this chart, is it the same data point at the same time?
It is.
Or is that the end of the school year?
It is the same.
So it's getting lower?
It is getting lower, yes, we know it's gone up quite a bit, but since the, since that date for our district, but just in who we're knowing, but more and more families are checking the no box than they had in the year past. And, and part of that is also going to, you know, one of the unintended consequences, which is really minute, of going to an online registration system, because they're filling that out and checking the yes or no. And so we're moving more and more towards that direction of doing that, which most districts are, but then people are self-determining the no part, where we might know that they're yes. And then we end up having to go through a process to change that down the line. So then when we look at our student services team, we looked at some of the data from the day coming year. These are goals that we have as a student services team that we're constantly looking at. These are students feeling connected to at least one adult in the building. We're seeing this relatively high, right about ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of students within the district who feel connected to at least one adult, and then beside their parent, who they can come to if they have a problem. So that doesn't necessarily mean an adult within a building, but it, it at least means there's somebody outside of the family structure, and in a lot of cases, that does become somebody within the school. And then this is in the past thirty days, how many, how often have you felt nervous, anxious, or on the edge? You can see that the hallways has increased significantly in all of the categories, where the often sometime is pretty consistent, and then the sometimes is pretty consistent, and then the never, at least in high school, is, is increased. And so that kind of goes into where we'll get to the end about some of the services and the, you know, that we're providing for kids on a, on an annual basis, but this one is, I feel like I belong at the school. And you can see, it isn't a steady decline, but it's, it's pretty consistent. Over thirty-six percent strongly agree, or thirty-eight percent agree. At the middle school and at the high school, it's twenty-four percent strongly, and then agrees fifty-one percent. So they're, they're pretty high numbers, but they definitely have worked your own.
Do you want to break these out by grade? I just wonder how the survey is in this term, is it?
I do not think that, I can look at the data, but I'm pretty sure that we just get middle school data, but I can look it up.
I'm just thinking about the middle school.
Data, so it's not given a sixth grade?
Okay, so it's just-
So, so when you look at middle school here, it would just be seventh and eighth?
Okay.
And then really, what we're looking at is last year, and we've talked about it a lot of these meetings, we're really looking at, from a student services staff, we're really reactionary, which we were required to do based on a lot of the situations that happened. And this year, primarily focus has been going to a more proactive response, working on our universal responses, working on our instruction that really focuses on social emotional growth for kids in K five, and as well as six, twelve as well. I did not include some of the specific data because it's so confidential, because we don't want to help students who are seeking outside help, and so they really talked about not wanting people to know, and in some cases, it's, it's the family and the student's rights not to even tell us that there was a hospitalization. But from the numbers that, that I've seen, and talking with our student services staff, between what's happened in the last few years, we're talking about an alarming increase of students who have had to be hospitalized for attempts or for serious stress and risk factors, really at, at, at too many grade levels. It's not just a high school issue, and so we're really trying to get some of those coping strategies worked on at a younger age, and more coping strategies than we have in the past is what we're really continuing to work on, because we know when, when kids are at a higher level of, of risk for suicide or potential of, of attempts is when their, their stress levels increase and they don't have enough coping mechanisms to go to that high stress level, and so we gotta keep working on some of those things, and we've done so much outreach and connectedness and meeting with hospitals and finding out what they're doing, so we can implement some of the same strategies, and just trying to build a better system of support are all things that we've done this year over the summer to, to kind of help support kids throughout our, throughout our buildings. I think that's the spring report.
That's right.
To get into everything we've done.
Don't leave them wanting more.
Right.
So for all the programs that we have for kids who are anxious, or are we giving that out to parents? In like a cohesive way, because I know we've done like a few things on Facebook, or we've sent an email, but I was wondering if we have a-
Yeah, I think that that's an area we can continue to improve upon. I know that at our K five level, everything that we're doing in the second step curriculum with our social workers are being sent in newsletters on what they're doing and what their next area is. So they're trying to constantly give what's next and what they're working on in some of those areas. But I, I think in general, what we've really learned within the last year is we have a lot of things that we're implementing, groups, social groups, grief groups, all of those things, and as a whole, even students in the building don't necessarily know what we're offering, so that is something we're working on, doing a better job of, is getting out what we're all, what are the offerings that we're providing and able to provide as a district.
Is it maybe something we can put on our shiny new website? Like, I have a child with anxiety, what can I do? And like, you know, we have this program, this program, this program, something. Because I had a parent ask me, and I was like, I can come up with three things, and then I gave him the orientation.
Perfect.
That's, that's the best I got right now.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, we do definitely have a student services tab, and so those are definite areas where we can increase that communication.
And the same thing, when I received periodic messages about, you know, if you wanted to spend all in a small room or comments, like, I think that's wonderful to receive that, but I think our kids, my eldest and me, and, and for old enough, then maybe they should be asked that question too, and I wonder, like at what age do we offer directly, like, say, would you like to be in a room?
Yeah, that's good enough. I know one of the things that's pretty, and I, maybe you can help me with which class it is, but we have a defiant class in the high school, that's more of like, it's different types of FADEN, lifetime FADEN. On Fridays, our, our school psychologist goes in and co-teaches that class. So they're doing learn to breathe stuff, and meditation, and some of these coping strategies in different ways, trying to get the information out to somebody who doesn't necessarily want to do a group, right? But still learn some of the starting strategies. And at our high school, that's one of the groups that Parametals runs, is the learn to breathe, right? It's on the stage in the high school, it's about how to breathe, how to, you know, work through stressors, and be mindful of your breaths in all of those moments, so.
And I feel like it's kind of almost the opposite problem, as the kids get older, nothing really gets communicated to the parents, and it's all on the kid, and the kid is like, well, I'm fine. The parent might be like, you're not fine, we need to do something, so you have to answer the bell.
Oh.
Yes. Awesome. Any other questions? Okay, we'll see you in one more minute.
Sounds good.
All right, six C, twenty nineteen W A S B board delegate review. So we got the current list of resolutions that are gonna be before the W A S Bs, there will be more, some of them they won't let me touch on, but any in this packet, if you made it through the family, there's not this many right out of the gate, that you would like me to vote a specific way on? Using my best judgment?
Best judgment has always depended on what we went by.
Usually, but I always like to ask, I don't want to assume, there might be like some hot button issue that somebody's like, no, this is horrible, don't vote on that. Boy, this is awesome, vote on that, so. All right, okay, push the button, however I feel that day. Okay. All right, seven A, review of safety drills. You are back, you didn't even use it.
Already, so quick.
One of the components that's, that's now due in, in state law is that we need to report to the board, and you need to approve that we do at least one drill annually around the area of school safety. We, every principal now keeps a list of everything that we do, and we basically keep this once a month, what we're doing, what time it happened, the length of the time, and then an evaluation of how it went, and so we're doing those now for fire, the principals are doing those now for fire drills for everything we're doing. This past month, we did our first barricading drill. We did it within every building on a specific day. Hopefully you saw the safety letter that just updated families on everything we're doing in every different category throughout this year and moving forward. And then this drill was announced in it as well, so we were able to provide a lot of administrators from district office were present within the buildings to see if, just to help out as needed, to see how it was going. Since it was our first time, we had no need to yet. If it would go well, what kind of anxiety, some of those things that kids would feel about it. We had a script that was read for our younger grades, and I, we were, we just briefed it as a, as a safety team this morning, and you know, from all intensive purposes, it went as well as, as a drill like this can absolutely go. Hopefully, if you, some of your kids talked about their experiences through it, but it was low stress, kids seemed to be having a really fun time with it. We learned a lot through the process of what we wanted to do better and how we can continue to do better. But it was also our first go at, you know, every year in the past was the turn off the lights, lock the door, hide in the corner, and now let's do something. Let's do something, let's do a drill, let's do a practice. We had the teachers take pictures of what they did, and then they're gonna put those in the subfolders, so we can continue the cycle of learning.
Would you mind sharing with the board the good work of our dean of students, Katie Ginnan, and how she went into classrooms?
Yeah, so Katie Ginnan, as, as well with Pam Shaw, they did a whole classroom presentation, so they went into every single classroom, K five, and talked about the process and the whole kind of our critical incident response, and what that would look like, and what our new steps are, and then take questions and answers, and just talk to kids about it, and why we were moving in this direction, and why it's important for their safety, and it's a life skill, it's more than just our school. It's about, you want these skills to be learned in every component, and how to react and what to do, which is really number one is you run, number two is you hide, and three, you fight. But at the K five level, as, as we've talked in the past, we do not talk about or even go through the areas of fighting. And we haven't actually done that either, besides just talking about it from a, from a middle and high school level, which is what three things are.
So is this a, a once a year deal, or will you be doing this again yet before the splitter is over, or how?
Yeah, so we're working with our administrative team to go more about it, but ultimately, we're trying to change the way we do drills, because we can, we have to do an evacuation drill once a month. But it doesn't always have to be a fire drill, so it could be a chemical spill, it could be, there's a lot of different ways on how you evacuate, and why you would need to evacuate. And so that's just changing some of those, the ways you think about it. We'll be changing a little bit within the district, but we're not gonna do, I, I think our goal was to do two kind of more intruder-type drills, but we'll always let families know when we're gonna do one beforehand, send out notifications. After our last one, we probably had a couple of families ask if they could be exempt, and, and parents have ever had to do that, so. We'll continue to keep teaching, and the families are really opposed to it, or have concerns, because they've had some traumatic event, or, you know, there's a lot of different reasons that are attached to that, and we, we under that as well. So that's why we'll always let them know ahead of time. These are never, which in every training we've ever been to, these are never where kids don't know it's a drill beforehand. So these aren't like the fire alarm surprises, like, these are always, this is gonna happen at this time, this is what we're doing, this is what we're practicing.
So I did get reprimanded by my, my first grader, because I said, did you, how was school today? And she's like, great, we got to basically build a pyramid in front of the door, and Miss Johnson couldn't get in. And I'm like, cool, so you guys said run, fight, run, hide, fight, she goes, no, we don't fight. Maybe if you had, no, there's no fighting, mom, it's just run and hide. So, while we're not teaching them fight, we might need to maybe expound upon when?
For the whole drawing things.
Right, like, it's not fight, like, I think she's thinking, I'm gonna karate kick a bad guy in the head, and I'm like, that's not it. And even though they're little, I was, I was a little like, well, no, but you could, and she's like, no, we don't fight. Like, this was like a five-minute conversation, I'm like, but you could. But no.
Right, I think there's different ways to end up teaching how to fight depending on what grade you're in. I think if, so far, our, our stance at the E L C P C level is just not to talk about that part. I think that it's, it's scary for a lot of people to have some of those discussions where maybe three, four, five, and then you start talking about the Oodle Loop, and you try to just get out, and then how do you maybe get out? How do you get out if somebody's in your way in the middle, so you can throw something and then try to run? Like, you can add some more of those things in, but, but yeah, the, you know, and, and I have kids that are getting taught the same thing, it's parallel in a different district, so it's great to hear what they come home and say, and then I can implement or change how we're doing, kind of based on it too, but, so, some of their experiences. So, and I have a middle schooler and an elementary schooler, and their messaging is very different as well, so. So yeah, but yeah.
Yeah.
I'm glad though that our, she's listening.
She is listening, she is. She didn't at all, I don't think, understand why they were doing it, but they got to build like a pyramid in front of the door, and then if they, if Miss Johnson couldn't get in, then they got to take it all down and put it back. Apparently that is very exciting for first graders, is to clean up the mess you've made, that doesn't-
Only in school.
Only in school, it was more at home, but-
One of the things that, that really connected to me when we did all of this training is, is that it's okay that they maybe don't understand when they're in first grade. But what we've done as a district previously, and for many years, is teach to duck, hide, cover. And when we watched videos, and in, in some of the trains that we went to, we watched airport shootings, university shootings, we watched all of these different shootings occurs within community settings, and people were feet from doors, and they're maybe cut- community settings and people were feet from doors and they're, because schools have taught for so many years that you duck under the desk, you duck and cover, that they're feet from doors and they're ducking and covering behind suitcases and bins and, you know, little things that you really can't hide behind. And so, so we're changing the narrative on what you do in a crisis situation, even if they don't connect all the pieces at a young age. We're teaching the right way to do it into the future.
The board meets for their workshop on February 25th. We'll have some tabletop exercises for us to practice too, as it is a team. I suspect that the reason why we heard from so many, so few parents about their children not participating is because of two things. First, the great work of the Safety Committee in front-loading students with what to expect. But then the letter the committee authored and then you put the finishing touches on was just absolutely exceptional. And I've heard that from many families throughout the community. So a tip of the hat to you, Brian, not only for the report that you've done earlier tonight, but then also for us at, for the board, I should say, to look at this report. Our proposal to you would be in December of each year, we'd call all of these reports together so you could see them and then you could please take action per the required statutes.
The two comments that our staff heard from other people were in the positive realms where now I can tell my child to do what the teacher tells them to do. Because even I had told my kid, like, even if it's duck and cover, like, you run. Like in a lot of adults who kind of know some of these worlds have told their kid, "It doesn't matter what the teacher says, this is what you do if you're in a crisis situation." And so they had told our services staff, "Now I can tell my kid to listen to the teacher and..." We're good.
All right. So we need a motion. What are we, motion?
Motion to accept. If you look at the language here, if we look at our motion, you have a second.
Second. Just seconded by Danny. Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion areas. Number two B, approval of supplemental summer school offerings beginning in the summer of 2019. I'm so excited. No question.
Okay. So I did a little more digging. Let me backtrack, so we've been talking about summer school at the Education Committee for a couple of times now. And we've been trying to figure out when the last time we had a summer school program in the enrichment. Well...
What year was that?
2002. Okay. This is the most recent copy that I have in my file. It's not only, it's the only copy I have in my files that I found. So I'm guessing it's last year. This is in the files. So seventeen years?
What year is it?
2002. Names in here, I recognize some names, many names I don't recognize. So that's that, so that, that question. So from 2003 on, we've had a summer school program that focuses mostly on remediation or intervention for students in the areas of math and reading as well as kindergarten prep, as well as the middle school level, more completion of homework, content work with to promote or advance the next program. So since we have a longer summer and some other factors have come into play, the question was, why not enrichment? So Mahora within our community, dating community, writer conference, whatever, however you'd like to look at it, most school districts around us have an enrichment program later summer. So we thought, well, let's do some more research. So we reached out to families first in October and 456, 457, wish people responded, families responded. And overwhelmingly, it looks like this is an interest for families within our community. One question that pops up that Dr. Schlerin was on right now was, two, as we're planning for summer school, which is the wellness direction, is the most convenient time, that mid-June to mid-July was the most convenient time for not only the families, but for staff as well that was in the choice. So that has informed our planning. We're being a little proactive and imagining if the board would support this, we're starting to think of times and the logistical things to keep moving forward. Our current summer school structure, being remediation only, was somewhat offsetting to some students and families, seeing that that's only students that need that go to summer school. And there was a stigma attached to it. So we have an enrichment program, hoping that more students that may need that intervention or extra support at that time, and not to be able to, they're going because X, Y, and Z. We also asked family and staff which kind of classes that they would find enjoyable to give that information as well. So both surveys had parallel types of questions, so we got some new feedback and some overlap. Any questions on the surveys in general? Dr. Schlerin was on the family version right now, going through it. Couple other pieces that we asked about families were the cost of consumables. Let's say a cooking class or some other type of class where there would be consumables that the students would bring home. You can ask for a fee for that as long as every single dollar is spent on something that the student would consume and take with them. You can't use that money to purchase supplies that we then hold on to. So be very thoughtful in that process, the staff. But that did not seem to be a barrier. If it was a barrier for families, then we, as a school leadership, would help out enough. And families have said that they'd also donate funds as well, where we'd also see outside support. I don't see it being a barrier. Translocation question was asked as well and that didn't seem to be too much of a barrier. I think most parents would love extra translocation for the kids. Doing that would be a huge cost increase. To go to a door, that would happen. Currently, we go up to Blue Mountains and local childcare centers and sites. So we will continue that practice. Can't remember if there was a question about the four corners or not. I don't know if we had that question. So those are some of the logistical things we wanted to get from families as we were figuring this out and trying to do information. Now I'll have to, I always say I'll pay the questions and I keep going, so now I will wait on you. Five seconds.
Would we ever consider additional staff, like on Main Street? So like if the bus is already going to drive from Blue Mountains down Main Street, would we consider a spot like Granny Foster Park or something? That's another space that kids might not walk as far, but could still snag the bus?
Potentially. Depends on capacity of the bus. So I believe we send one bus up to Blue Mountain back, so we'll just have to keep tabs on who will be coming in and undo the homework up front to see if that could occur. Would that be a question for Brian to tell, whether we send two buses the first day and try to figure it out just so we don't get stranded? The more bus driver time, bus driver time, diesel time, diesel costs, all that will add into the program. So anything's a possibility. You have to make sure it works though.
Do you know what classes we're going to be offering as for the summer of 2019?
Yeah, so we've been on how the board, the direction board must go tonight. We were going to move forward with this. We have a, almost finalized staff proposal form that will go out this week, asking staff members for proposal ideas. And then we would offer some area school districts in the area or the state, I'm sharing their catalogs of staff with ideas of Legos courses, knitting book clubs, robotics, Lego. They said they have Legos, but I knew one in every school district. But just offering staff with ideas. I still plan on tapping staff members. I know that there's certain area expertise or interest. I know we have a knitting club here, so we would talk to that teacher or we have family consumer science teachers. If they were to teach a class that they do with babysitting or sewing or cooking, those kinds of things, we have the talent center in our school district. So it's just understanding who they are and encouraging them to offer proposals.
So then the staff proposals, would they then go to the education committee like the courses do or?
That was not the plan. That's something that you talk about. It was going to just go through my office somewhere, it's like, like you would use course proposals and things like that. And then I would look at the courses, see if they have overlap, see what kind of interest we have, further clarify with that staff member each levels and just make sure we have variety for kids and make sure there's a variety at certain sessions they offer. I never thought of going to education committee. I don't know what thoughts are on that.
It might be helpful to give us, it might be helpful to give us a sense of what the, what the spectrum of offerings is going to look like.
That, then are we thinking of needing approval for the course?
I mean, I was just thinking of the way we do courses when we do, I mean, first, that's what I was thinking. As far as this program, would you do for syllabus or? I mean, I don't think what we get now for education is consistent with the word syllabus. I think it's kind of an overview.
Correct. We expanded slightly recently, but...
And I would think the form that you ask people to complete, I mentioned that, to propose a course would be, continue to be similar information to what a course is.
Course description, connection with standards. We are asking for a connection to one of our curriculum goals, reading, math, or wellness. We are asking about consumable costs and a file system that could go along with that. We're asking for which session they would like to teach in. So more than just pieces and course catalog pieces.
I do think we should...
Well, consumable cost, is that going to be passed on to the parents or is that part of the budget for this? What was the?
In other summer school programs, it gets passed on to the families, so $5, $10, something like that.
So I think we should approve, for consistency sake, we should do something to approve the courses similar. Do we want to do for regular courses?
We'll only approve high school courses, right? We don't approve like fifth grade now.
Well, everything else is part of a curriculum. It's a curricular change then, and that would go through education.
And this is going to be like 4K through 12 or 4K through 5?
Eight. I think for right now.
Unless we have a policy that describes how those changes are made without board approval.
So these courses aren't for graduation? These courses, do you have to transfer? These courses aren't?
Is that because we can't be for graduation? Or I'm just thinking, I know kids that have taken classes in the summer to graduate.
Those are high school courses.
Right, but that's why I'm asking.
Yep. It's a K three program this year. And we could expand, a natural expansion, which I already had one staff member ask about this, an A P we can, the one D E P prep course, since, since they're already taking A P books home for summer and all these things. We could pilot that this summer if a staff member is interested in that.
I was thinking physical education too. That might be something that they could do in the summer that then could allow them to take their academic classes.
So we do have, I might be, sometimes offered in the summer, sometimes I'm offered in the summer. That would be for graduation requirement. That's already worked.
We're still thinking of having a summer school coordinator, what position we put us.
Yeah, yeah. We talked about the job description, what that could look like, we're formalizing that too soon. Don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves before talking and working with you guys on that.
So, and we've already checked, as you mentioned Legos, and I know the rec department does like two or three different Lego, like robotics type classes, so none of what we would do would overstep with what they're doing.
So I have a meeting with Joe that I'll leave Wednesday morning. So just talk through some things about time period, sessions, those kinds of things. I should add that's back in September. I thought I touched base with her around this time to give her an idea when it was on to make sure we're not overstepping on each other.
Right. And you know, that class is quite expensive. So if we're talking consumable costs, maybe they take a Lego home? So maybe it's...
They do take Legos now.
They don't for the rec department, but we're talking about if they go through summer school and it was consumable. I mean, that would be pretty appealing to, I think, a lot of parents to be like, "Ooh, I could pay a hundred and some dollars or I can pay 10." And so I wouldn't want the village to then be crabby with us.
Yep. Definitely were that.
We've been having those conversations up to this point and I think we're really at a critical juncture before we put more energy and time and resources into this to make certain meets with the board's approval. I think we're at a good spot to move forward if the board is so inclined. In terms of cost, I must be honest with you, I don't know that we have a firm understanding of the cost yet because so much of that is contingent upon the number of courses that are offered and the number of students who are enrolled in those courses. If we assume that we can offer 30 different kinds of enrichment activities and we can have, what was the number, 20, 21, 20 students in each of those sections, the cost obviously is going to be a lot less than would be the cost for us to have fewer number of classes, fewer number of students filling those seats. And from a revenue standpoint, there is a possibility that if this is done well and have every faith in your ability and that of the team that's been charged with this task, that we can grow this program, that eventually it will be enough that we could at least break even or maybe even see a few dollars. I wouldn't want to bet the house on it, but I think enough to be able to say that this could get us to a good spot. So I'm really hesitant to say what that is until we get the actual, actual figures.
So would we have like a minimum requirement first, even hold the class?
Yeah.
And probably a maximum, you know, watch, you know, 100 first graders in Legos?
In general, I think this is a great idea. We've been lacking. I would like to see what the budgetary impact would be, especially in the start of years because that could be a little bit more significant.
We've run a number of scenarios and I think as we get closer and closer to the board's workshop on February 25th, I think we'll be better positioned to kind of share those scenarios with you. But nonetheless, so much of that's going to be dependent on our moment. And I think we've get to a really good spot with the good work that's been done thus far.
Yep. My kids will have, you know, kids in that?
Yes.
I mean...
Halfway there.
Halfway there.
Two of mine are too old, so.
One of mine is old too.
We have half a class of the guys, so. Yep. So, no, we're good. We got, we got two sessions ready.
I could use my feedback.
Take Rancis, Josh, we'll take that right.
I hope he watches these videos.
He does.
So what exactly do you need from us in terms of approval? Because it seems like it's not terribly defined yet, so I'm not sure exactly what you're thinking from us.
I think for us tonight, the ask is for us to continue our exploratory work, get the applications in from staff to see if we can run the courses.
Start putting numbers together.
Start putting numbers together and then I think maybe around the end of February, be able to pull the pin on whether or not we're willing to invest whatever dollars necessary to get it off the ground for this year.
All right. So I hope that we give you guys the going to continue your exploration.
All right. Danny, seconded by Drew. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye. Opposed? Yay. Thank you. All right. Policy first reading, community library use policy 362.2.
I came across this policy.
Part of our attorney's review.
Probably, probably. So we have a community library use policy that's original version was created to fulfill the Enhancing Education Through Technology Act, which basically said that school districts were required to adopt...
which basically said that school districts were required to adopt a policy requiring interlibrary loan in order to fulfill the library plans, the library tech plans. But since library tech plans are no longer required through state mandates, we don't need that kind of policy. And we've never had, I shouldn't say never, we typically have not had outside citizens come into our school libraries to check out books. We just don't have a public library. So we had a policy in place that didn't match the practice, basically. So in meeting with our libraries, one of these specialists that proposed this policy to them and asked them for revisions. They were comfortable having local citizens that had a current student, that they could check out books. But they have no way to really track if it's Joe Schmo from our community coming in to check out a book. There's no way to follow up with that person, those kinds of things. So we typically haven't checked out books to outside people. We had had some people come into high school libraries to look at their books for historical reasons. And libraries have worked with them, making copies and things like that. But they don't really have them to check out either. So we just wanted to match the policy to the practice. Another reason why I worked on this policy now and then was because we had phone numbers. That's how this really started. They had phone numbers in the policy that once we changed our lines, we can obsolete. So that's how this sort of moved forward. So, similar policy, little shorter. We took out phone numbers and just said that basically family members, students can borrow out of our school libraries. Otherwise, they should attend or go to Mahora Public Library. I called one of the library news specialist consultants from the state, shared our current policy with her. She couldn't figure out why we had this policy except for the library plan as well, which is no longer, which is now obsolete. I called Jessica Blunt from Mahora Public Library to make sure we didn't have a partnership or agreement. She said nothing about the books. So I think we did our due diligence on this. But yeah, she's putting the policy that we currently have into the practice that we have.
So, wouldn't it be better if someone wanted to borrow a book, if the library didn't have it, that we loaned it to the library? I don't know. It seems like, even if you have a kid in the district, it just seems that you're like, I'm going to go check a book out at school. It's just a weird policy to me that if we don't need it, seems that it's obsolete. I don't... It's weird to me. It's weird to anybody.
Then we need a way to track what we send to the library.
I think that's going to be one every 30 years. I mean, I think the libraries probably got the same books we do, if not more. And they can intertransfer between libraries.
They want to transfer.
I mean, this circumstance happens approximately never.
Except, except your books. Except your books.
But they're not checking them out?
Typically not. In a business college, they would check out. So your staff member has a pile of the rest in the cold, twenty, thirty, the rest in the cold from 1960. That was the example, so...
But then that still wouldn't be covered in this class. They still wouldn't really take the book out because they're not, they don't have students. Right. Staff can take books out, so...
Yep, so at education committee, we didn't talk about needing this policy at all versus revising it to the form you see today. At education, we decided to revise versus remove, correct? And you are saying to remove versus revise?
Well, I would not education, so yeah. It just, it just is a weird policy to me. I don't, I don't know.
So it's kind of a relic from a time in the library science field too where this is especially true when you have really small towns, or as my heart used to be. And the school then could also function as sort of a public library.
If you didn't have one.
You did have one. Another thing, this is one of the lifetime things, but occasionally we have gamble challenges, such as they did in Sunbury. And one thing that a, sort of like a litigation expert will look at is are parents allowed to check out books if they wanted to? This is sort of one where they're going to access. Like, yes, we, of course, we're not permitting our parents, you know, still giving our parents a check. I don't think we ever used policy that again, but that's another reason why some principles have it. And those two in general, when it was a small economy, you needed it. And then for censorship purposes. I think it's fine to remove it too, but that's just some extra in these types of policies.
Boy, no one reads like the IC to the, what do they call it? Everybody read the same book. They just send home a copy. So, you wouldn't even need to check one out because they provided it. I don't know. I don't have, I don't have strong feelings. It's just a weird policy to me. Bring the buzzer and be like, I want to check a book out from the library. Like, if I want a book, I just tell my kid to pick it up, I guess. The library didn't have it. I have strong feelings. It's just weird to me. Weird policy.
Alright. The question of the high school I'm hearing, that they have strong feelings on it, that's the question.
Miss Hery, just to give you an example, did it look? So the previous policy, it said the person had to show, or something like that, first off, something like required, Mahora Public Library, kind of the minors license, to check out a book. And her concern is, okay, so I don't think they're threatening. Yes, I can even check them, what would have been the book, whatever return. That piece of it, and then she didn't want to be your book piece. Those were two pieces I got from the seller. She never had an outside staff, outside person check out a book. And she also wanted to make sure that students have access first, over student members.
So what if, you know, my kid's grandma comes in, who has a different last name than him and wants to check out a book? How do you verify that the person who says they are is actually in fact related to child acts in our school?
Especially people coming into the building during the day when you...
Yeah, they come in, I'm Phoenix's grandma, okay. And then Phoenix is like, why, who checked this book out? And we don't know who it is.
I don't know. We're just going to have things, and then we're still...
Yeah.
I think we should just remove this policy.
Somebody can make a motion?
A motion, a hard move that we get rid of this policy.
Second.
Again, seconded by Brad. Any other discussion?
Well, I think anything that encourages people to read is a good thing. And I think anything that gives people access to the materials offered under tax dollars, I think, is a good thing. I don't know if those outweigh the negatives you just expressed though.
Well, I think the most important thing is that the kids have access to the books. Sure, right. It's not the books we've got at the library. With deeper resources through the...
Alright, so this is the first reading. So we need a roll call vote. So Danny?
Yes, to write.
Yes, to removing it. Yep, Dan?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Red?
Yes.
And also, yes. Okay, so we are removing this policy. Thank you, thank you. Alright, 8A, citizens' comments. None. Nine is our featured agendas. 10, all of our next meetings are there. Alright, so the act of 11, closed session. Contemplate closed session for section 19.85, front one, N front, front C, N front of Wisconsin statute for considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Diana. Roll call vote. Danny, yes, Damon.
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Red?
Yes.